Good meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Vice Mayor Jones. If everyone would stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Let Shannon get up here. Let's all bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we know that you are always with us, near us, and beside us in all that we do. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our very fine city. Grant us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the courage to act. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Louis, thank you for doing the invocation. Do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Mrs. Bush.
Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved, you have authorized the closing of the closed session as stated.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of September 15, 2015? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Counsel, I have a few presentations to make, if I may. The first one being our proclamation for Community Planning Month. If Jeff Hodgson from the Planning Commission and Barry Franklin Field, interim planning director, could come forward.
There's no question. I don't think.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas change is a constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. Whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully employed, excuse me, involved in making choices and determine the future of their community. Whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. Whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and the other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community planners who work for the city of Virginia Beach and elsewhere in Hampton Roads region and extend our gratitude for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore I, William D. Sussman Jr., Mayor of City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to hereby proclaim October 2015 Community Planning Month. And I'd like to present this to Barry or to Jeff.
Jeff, because they aren't illustrious chairman.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you very much.
There you go. Any comments?
I want to thank the council for your support. I certainly want to thank the planning commission. I think our chairman has some comments. Thank you.
Yeah, Barry, the last few minutes asked me to come up.
I asked him to do it. I'm trying to delegate a lot.
I just like to say thank you for recognizing October as the Community Planning Month. I've had the privilege of being on the planning commission for the last five years, and it's a lot different standing here than it is sitting up there. And I never knew there was a plaque that said Relax until just now. So I've been fortunate to work with the planning department of the city of Virginia Beach, and I can tell you firsthand that the city is incredibly lucky to have such a talented group of individuals working in the planning department. It's no secret that they do all the heavy lifting for the planning commission and make our jobs considerably easier. The city's always done a fantastic job of engaging the public in the planning process, and hopefully this proclamation will continue that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is David Kunkel here? Come forward, please, sir. He got a proclamation from me a few months ago. Now he has to come get one from everybody signing off, but it's well, well deserved. And David, so nice to have you here. Whereas David Kunkel has lived in Virginia Beach since 1978 and conducted the first Virginia Beach Symphony Orchestra in 1981. In 2007, the Virginia Beach Symphony's name was changed to Symphony City, the Symphony Orchestra of Virginia Beach, to reflect its new identity as a resident of the Sandler Center for Performing Arts as the Symphony of the City. He has conducted symphonicity in over 300 concert venues and is now in his last season after 35 years. The entire history of the orchestra. He is well-known throughout the entire region. Whereas David was educated in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, area of public schools where he studied piano, the French horn, violin, and organ. He enlisted at the United States Navy and graduated in 1962 from the Navy School of Music. In 1967, he attended a Navy Band master course. Upon graduation, he served as the Navy Band Director in Washington, DC, and Boston, Massachusetts. From 1975 through 1978, he was the Associate Conductor of the United States Navy Band in Washington, conducting performances at the White House, the Capitol, Washington National Cathedral, and the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. David attained the rank of Chief War Officer and became the conducting instructor at the Armed Forces School of Music at Little Creek until he retired in 1984. Whereas David conducted the Virginia Beach Ballet, Norfolk Seabirds, and contributed his talent, energy, and expertise to many educational concerts for students. He was named to the Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee by the Virginia Beach City Council. He received the Alley Award for Individual Achievement in the Arts from the Cultural Alliance of Greater Hampton Roads in 2002, and the Award for Adventurous Programming from the League of American Orchestras and their annual conference in Philadelphia in 2003. On July 4 of this year, Virginia Beach Mayor Will Sussman recognized David for his unique contribution to Virginia Beach arts and excellent music for more than 35 years. Now therefore it be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council paused in its deliberation to recognize David Kunkel for his dedication, performance excellence, and love for the city he adopted, adored, and served tirelessly. The best city in the world. And this is signed by all members of City Council. And I speak for the council and the citizens of Virginia Beach. You are one talented gentleman that has really done a tremendous amount to bring some wonderful, wonderful culture to our great city. And I do thank you very much. If I may present this to you.
We welcome you to make a comment if you'd like.
My only comment is to thank you personally for reading all that. It was just about as long as the one you read on the Fourth of July, I think, only not quite so hot.
It's an honor to do it.
Thank you all to the City Council. The orchestra that I leave with you is quite a gem, which you may not be aware of. Proof of that is the fact that my job was advertised internationally, and we had over 60 candidates from six of the seven continents. Antarctica, I guess, has no conductors come here to Virginia Beach. So it's one of your half dozen or so institutions of both art and things like the Science Museum, the aquarium, and the air museum down in the south that enrich this city. I hope you will keep a parental eye on all of these groups. They're important to the life of the city. My wife and I made a choice to end our life here. We didn't get trapped here by jobs or family or anything. We made a conscious decision for me to get out of the Navy and stay here. We haven't regretted it. We love it here. And I hope to enjoy a number of years of old age watching the arts groups grow. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
And counsel, we have a very special presentation, a nice visitor. We have Ms. Philippines Pre-Teen here, and Shannon Kane, would you be kind enough to make the introduction, please?
I would be happy to. Mia, could you come forward? Everyone, we have royalty here with us tonight. This is Mia Alana Kalim, and she is Ms. Philippines Pre-Teen, Virginia. And she wants to be the president one day, but she said she will take Will's job first before she becomes president.
That's why you left here.
She wanted to come tonight to see how City Council worked and how government worked and enjoy the night with us. And I asked her to come as her royal self, as Mrs. Pre-Teen's Ms. Philippines, and so she did. She's here with her mom, Christine. And Mia, we are so happy to have you here tonight. And she worked so hard to receive this title. In addition to being as beautiful as she is, she had to work so hard in the community, doing community service hours. She had to fundraise to sell ads for their program. And she really had to do a lot of work to earn this. And she said to her mom on her own that, "I want to do this, and I want to compete." And she did. So congratulations, Mia, and thank you for coming tonight.
She also picked up that she wants to be mayor. We were pretty sitting right up here one day, okay? Thank you.
I'll now open public hearings on the proposed lease of city-owned property of 1101 11th Street, LC, Trainist Cafe, Connector Park Cafe, and 21125th Street, J. &amp; Dip Corporations Tropical Smoothie Street Cafe.
No speakers, Your Honor.
A declaration of conveyance of excess city-owned property, 704 Hampshire Lane to the African American Cultural Center.
I do have speakers, Your Honor.
If you'd call the speakers, please. We'll have three minutes.
The first speaker is Todd Tower.
We welcome you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. I'm happy to be here to speak on behalf of the American Cultural Center. I am, I think, informally a member of its legal board of advisors, but I'm here really today just as a citizen to say how excited I am about this project. When I was in Washington, DC several months ago and saw the National African American Cultural and History Museum arising in the last available space on the National Mall, it was a thrilling sight to see, and I think that this project will be equally thrilling for the members of this community. Because despite the central role that African Americans have played from the beginning, from the very beginning in shaping the history of this country, this state, and this city, that history has long been ignored and sometimes even actively suppressed. So it's an especially appropriate time with the building on the mall going up, with such movements to recognize the lives of black Americans in Virginia Beach citizens are so important to all of us, that we recognize that and that we educate the public about the history and culture of our African American citizens. It will be a great place for all. I hope that you will vote in favor of this because of the inextricable weaving of our black Americans' history into our own local culture. It'll be a great thing, and I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Jim Banks. And the next is Bruce Williams.
We welcome you tonight, sir. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Mayor Sussman. I arise tonight because this is something that when we think about Princess Anne County, Virginia Beach, a lot of the things that some of the older people in this area remember are fast fading away. We're losing older schoolhouses. We're losing other buildings. And things like that need to be preserved. People who lived in the what we call target areas, Alice Green, Mr. Isaac Herbert, Clifton McCoy, and the different areas, they bring back memories. Vice Mayor remembers John Perry because we sort of fought against each other the first time he ran. So these type of memories need to be preserved, and we need to be able to get oral histories while the people are still here, and we need to have a place to preserve those things. So I'd like to stand and support that and would hope that you would vote for it.
Thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bruce Williams. And Andrew Jackson will be next.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening. It's Dean Council. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I stand in favor of this move to convey 704 Hampshire Avenue to African American Cultural Center. Just today on CNN, they pointed out a young person in Texas that looked at his textbook that was done by McGraw-Hill, which had an inaccurate accounting of how my lineage got here. He called his mother. She in turn called McGraw-Hill and through the internet corrected it. It shows us that even today we have to protect a very important part of our history, our history, because America, this is our first, first English colony, successful English colony, first African English colony. All of this is great history, and it has economic impact. The last three years, we've run, as you know, a cultural program at the beachfront, and we have been able to bring an increasing number of African American families from all over the East Coast to find out that, first of all, we have a great beach. Second of all, we have great restaurants. But what we want to do is now tell them we have a great protection of history. And being the number one tourist attraction in the state of Virginia, to have this as a venue adds to our economic value as well as our cultural value. This is a strategic growth area. Like at one point, we talked about being like the Baker District. It's in the confluence of two interstates, two major travel areas. We think this will be the kind of place that not only African American visitors to our city, but all visitors to say, "We want to get a culture summary of the entire region." We'll be able to start there and come to Virginia Beach to spend the money. So we support it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
Andrew Jackson.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and of course our city manager, I can't forget him, and the rest of the council. I also approve, support, and look forward to Cultural Center, because I think you all heard me speak about this several times in different ways. And probably, I'm not sure, but probably one of the first ones that gave Councilwoman a preview of what I saw as my travels of cultures, culture and history centers. I have a concern, though. Probably one of the longest people that's been around here for a while. One of the things that I know is our goal as a city, I love this city, but we have to keep bringing people here. We have to give them new things to see, the Cultural Center being one of those. But it has to be sustainable. We have to have people continually come in to see that Cultural Center museum. One of the issues that I have is, like any other thing that you do, a business or anything else, what's the word? Location, location, location. If we look at all of our other attractions, they're where people can get to them easily, even as far away from the beach as maybe the Sandler Center, but people go there because it's there. We're looking at what we're going to do with light rail. We need some way to have people come there, and we need a location where people are going to feel like this is the proper location for this. I want it to be part of our other great things that we have, music issues and everything here is located toward the beach where we can get to them. And so I would ask, while I give support, I would ask the council to take a look at that thing called location, 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 and see, is it going to be located where it is sustainable, where people are going to feel comfortable going? Okay? Because if you look at research, research will tell you that a museum will pull in three to four times as many people visiting as any sports or a music event. That's what we want. We want people coming here to see this great city. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down. Next speaker, please.
No speaker, Your Honor.
Continuing the public hearing on proposed support national rights of portion of the Lake Gaston Pipeline to Brunswick County and BDOT.
No speaker, Your Honor.
You have, Vice Mayor, it's time for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first ordinances and resolutions, item J. 1, which is ordinances to amend the city code, re encroachments, A. Article 6, Chapter 33, re public streets and places, B. Chapter 10, public works specifications, standards, re encroachments and rights of weight. J. 2, ordinance to amend an existing franchise agreement and grant a new franchise agreement for an open-air cafe in the resort area. J. 3, which is ordinances to authorize a subordination of rights for a portion of the Lake Gaston Pipeline crossing Pine Top Drive to Brunswick County, Virginia, Department of Transportation. And is Mr. Memes here? Were you going to speak on the acquisition of 324 North Burnet Road?
Yeah.
We will pull it.
Item 3, item 4, the resolution to authorize a city council policy re constitutional officer compensation to be deferred indefinitely. 5, resolution to direct the city auditor to conduct an audit of all human services programs. 6, an ordinance to carry forward and appropriate $1,309,400 from the fiscal year 2014, 15, and the fiscal year 2015, and 16, operating budget re previously authorized obligations and incumbents, A. $695,077 police, federal, and state seized asset funds, B. $237,000 sheriff's, federal, and state seized asset funds, C. $198,000 Public Works Fuel Internal Service Fund, and D. $179,323 the general fund. The clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on 6, C, and D. Item 7, which is ordinances to appropriate fund balances, A. $1,106,510 of the Tourism Advertising Program Special Revenue Fund for the fiscal year 2015, 16, operating budget of the Convention and Visitor Bureau for Advertising and Marketing. The clerk would please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on item 7A. And B. $80,000 of the Police Federal State Seized Asset Special Revenue Fund re Police Protective Gear.
Open a public hearing for planning.
On planning for consent. Item 1 is forefront Christian Church application for modification of conditions in the Princess Anne District. Item 2 is the RV Management Services in North Landing Beach RV Resort and Cottages, modification of conditions in the Princess Anne District. 3, All Safe Storage LLC and Oceana Partners LLC. Conditional use permit for many warehouses, modification of proffers in the Beach District. Item 4, trustees of Eastern Shore Chapel for conditional use permit for cemetery expansion on Laskin Road in the Beach District. Item 5, Rochelle M. Kitts Miller for conditional use permit re home occupation at 805 St. George Court with the additional condition to be added, Ms. Lasley, for the garage door closing. Item 6, La Ray Tucker and PP&amp;P LLC for conditional use permit re service station with convenience store at 3001 Selina Drive in the Beach District. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, noting Mr. Moss's nay vote on J. 6, C, and D, and 7A only.
Mr. Moss.
Yes. About two weeks ago Friday, the city manager delivered a memorandum to all the members of council notifying us that he was implementing a hiring freeze that might generate somewhere between $300,000 and $800,000 a month in order to offset a possible, and I anticipated, shortfall in next year's budget of $33 million. And he itemized some of the things that might compose that. I felt that the items that were 6C and 6D, which was fuel internal fund, general fund, and marketing, came with a paucity, as to be polite, of information and justification. We get these on Friday evening, so it doesn't give the staff much time to answer the questions that I had. But I wanted to understand how they knew that these items were more important than what the $33 million of the shortfall were next year, such that if we knew, we would still choose these and have a deficit. I think we should be conserving our cash. Unless we get a really good explanation, we could explain to the public as to why these are a higher priority than the things we say we might not be able to fund next year. So my vote is not no on the issue itself, but on the lack of any rational reasoning that says it has a relative higher priority than the things we won't be able to fund next year. But I do have one other question, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Since we are deferring indefinitely the compensation policy change proposed by the manager, does that mean the manager's taking that direction to continue the current practice that we have?
That would be correct.
Well, then I will be bringing forth my own proposal, which I was prepared to present tonight, which you'll get in your package, and I'll be putting on the agenda appropriately because I do not believe any elected official should have their compensation increased during their term of office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now go to item number 3B, the acquisition of property 324 North Burnet Road, estate of Marie Hickman to regard in future roadway improvements, 19th Street. And we have a speaker.
Mr. Memes.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm E. George Menes, President of Sea-Tac Community Civic League. I stand in opposition to the city purchasing the property. I believe the corrected land description is 324 North Burnet Road, if I'm correct. Two main legal points of concern is, one, it has been said in their records that improvements on North Burnet Road would be needed for the arena. One would include a turn onto 19th Street. As the city attorney know, we are in court on that matter, and the Chief Justice, O'Brien, put that matter on hold until November 12th. So I raise the concern and objection, as the plaintiff in that case, that anything connected to it should not be dealt with while that matter is pending before the court. The second concern I have is this disclosure statement that's in the packet. It purports to say it is the signature of Marie Hickman. But right beside that, it has what looks, appears to be, even on the microf, magnifying glass, the word "by," as if it is indicating that it's by someone else. And this looks like some organization signed it. That may be valid, but there is nothing in the packet that says how this land went from the owner of the property, who the city is allegedly purchasing it from. Then it says the estate of the person. From my speaking with persons in the community, and that is church, I don't know if the lady is deceased. Do you know she had a stroke? She's not there. So there is a gap in terms of that chain from the actual owner of the property over to who is supposed to be selling this property, and that aspect of it is not in the packet. If you look at page 44 of the disclosure, look where that signature is. It says "by somebody else" who is purporting to have authority to do it, but there's nothing in the packet that says how they acquired the authority over that person. in the packet that says how they acquired the authority over that person's property. The other factor is, I believe it was on about June 29th of this year, some, about 90 days ago, city manager James Four sent a letter to Mount Olive Church, specifically to Pastor Knight, Pastor Jason Knight, senior pastor, and he's present here, that the city would not do anything with the land of Mount Olive Baptist Church. Now, that church is a hundred and some years old, is the mother church of Sea-Tac. And during the discussion, I have a video on that, if any of you want to see it, because we videoed the town hall meeting with the deputy city manager, the deputy city attorney, and city officials, and the people for the arena, wherein they assured the church that nothing will be done around that church property without the church, A, being notified. The church was not notified on this. B, that the church would have a voice in the process and be able to participate in what's being done. The other factor that raised concern is, it is believed that that property was promised to the church as a way for the church to expand its off-street parking. Overall, the civic administration's concern is the treatment of Mount Olive Church as it relates to things around the church after the city manager, the chief executive officer for the city, has given a letter of assurance to the people of the church that nothing would be done right up around the church, and this is right around the church, next door, without the church even being informed. And I don't think anyone wants to be treated like that. Then there's the concerns concerning the property itself and as to its connection to the arena, as I've already raised. So I would ask, one, that you defer it and give an opportunity for the city to do what it assured an elder church it would do, talk to the church before it do whatever it's doing. I don't think the little space that would be a turn lane is that important above the integrity of a city government after the city, through its city manager, has given that church assurance. It would not hurt to meet with the church as the city said it would do. At some point, we should be able to trust the word of the city. And when that letter came, directed specifically to Pastor Jason Knight, senior pastor, signed by the city manager, they should be able to bank on that.
We thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Mr. Stiles, could you address that the application and contract has been properly executed?
Your Honor, Mr. Memes was referring to the disclosure statement. I am assuming that that disclosure statement was executed by the guardian appointed by the court to represent Mrs. Hickman. So yes, I believe that has been appropriately and lawfully executed, and I am sure that any purchase contract, we will guarantee, is also appropriately executed.
Mr. Memes, I'll give you a minute here.
If that is true, he said, "we assume," that was the word used, should not that document be in there so the public can see that that is so, rather than a mere presumption or assumption?
I'll note that point. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Before I do that, Mr. Four, we don't have any... Oh, I'm sorry.
Since he referenced a letter, I'd just like to... Was such a letter sent, and was the content of that letter accurately represented here this evening?
Well, I was not at the meeting, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that was referenced, but the intent of the letter was that we wanted to sit down with the church as the project moved forward and talk to them about how we could do some mutual improvements to their property and our property to increase their parking and square off their parcel. There's an angle there on the south side of the church that kind of disrupts their property, and we wanted to try and work with them on improvements that would be mutually beneficial for both parties. It really wasn't referring to this house. This is on the north side.
I would just like to provide a copy of that letter, just so I can read it for myself would be great. And so there, obviously, there's a difference of opinion, but I only guess the question. Did we have any meeting between the city and the church referencing that letter? Maybe Mr. Hanson might know that. I direct that to you to defer who you'd like to answer it.
Yes, sir. Yes, I attended that meeting on behalf of management, and yes, we did address any actions that would affect Mount Baptist, Mount Olive Baptist Church, and we made a promise to them that before we did anything related to the properties of Mount Olive Baptist, we would confer with the church, church leadership, and we are not affecting anything associated with Mount Olive Baptist with this voluntary sale.
Amelia?
Well, I just want to know what would really impact if they did do this due diligence, as he's mentioning.
The sale of this property is at the appraised value. We have David Perry from real estate here, who can, who took care of the matter and worked the issues with the homeowner and her legal guardian. She's currently in long-term medical care. The trusteeship that is provided by the sale of this provides for her long-term care going forward. We offered her the appraised value, and her guardianship approved that, which is about $9,000 more than the assessed value, and it is strictly voluntary. I would recommend that the city council move forward with the approval of this so that we can provide for that owner. We have arranged for her, the relocation of the current tenant at our cost and with their consent, and we are prepared to move forward and execute the voluntary sale.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that the community's mentioning they did not know enough of this part that you're mentioning.
Ms. Ross Hammond, normally, a sale, a purchase and a sale by the city council is handled at this, at this level, we generally don't ask the public if we can acquire a voluntary sale of property. But, you know, I would tell you that a delay here may affect the current status of the owner's care and long-term care.
John Hethel.
Thank you.
Yes, I did. This reminds me very much of the Ponty Grove Baptist Church, but just a little different perspective. In that case, the church was the private property owner, wanting to exercise their property rights to do something on their property, which I did vote for. Here's an individual that owns their own property, through their guardianship, wants to sell their property. You know, I understand the church. I guess they could have already counteroffered. But my point is, you know, we're here to protect private property rights, I think, first and foremost, if we can. And to me, the situations are very analogous. In both cases, people want to voluntarily, one wanted to use their property, here some wants to dispose of their property. I am concerned about we make misrepresenta-- may have made misrepresentations, or people took it the wrong way. You know, we'll look at that, but that doesn't, isn't injurious to the people's ability to sell their property. And I just think I have to be consistent. I voted for one, I'm going to support the other.
Your Honor, we have another speaker, the pastor would like to speak.
Okay. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all council persons. This is your first time, most of you, meeting me, hearing my voice, seeing my face. My concern is this, that this particular move deals with something that is set on hold. The building or the going forward with this arena project until November. My concern is that anything pertaining to that arena, whether it be modifications to the road, whether it be trying to get acquisition of land so that we can do those modifications, all of that is on hold until a decision has been made. So the integrity of this decision tonight, for this council to vote, is going to really be called into question with the court.
Amen.
Because that is on hold. That is my concern. I understand the law, and I get that owners, and yes, maybe we've missed out on an opportunity to buy some land, but it's on hold until the court makes a decision. And so to vote on it tonight will call into question this council. And I don't want to call it a council, question this council. I don't know each of you personally, but I want to hope that there's just a semblance of integrity here, so that we can do things the right way. Because no one wants to go to court over this decision. And so I would hope you would defer this decision until that court case is done and a decision has been made. And that's all I...
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. Shannon, and then?
Reverend, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If this is on hold until November...
Yes, ma'am.
And we haven't pushed the final button on the arena as of yet, you're correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have an objection to the city being your neighbor on that piece of property? If we can't do anything with it, and we're not going to have an arena in November, to oppose us owning that land and just having it there?
Of course, I would have an objection to the city because we're still growing, we're still expanding, and we need somewhere to park our people. And it will be dangerous, of course, we worked through it, to park on the other side of Birdneck Road at the academy and bust people over, but we really don't want to go through all of that. Mount Olive has gone through a season of transition, and with my being there now a little bit over a year, it has gotten new life, it's starting to grow, it's becoming a name in the community once more and again. And we're going to have, with our projections and our growth, we're going to have probably within the next year to have upwards of some 250 to 300 members in that church. And we only have probably 120, maybe 100 parking spaces on the property itself. And so we're going to need some type of land to expand, to be able to park, and we want to be safe when we park our parishioners. Also, before I got there, it was stated to me that the previous owner of that home had made promise to the deacon board, the trustee board, and the church, that if something were to happen to her, that the church would get first dibs on that property. Again, a lot of, a lot of things have gone on, and I won't go into detail. It was done very quietly. No one said anything, and then, up, Chuck, here we go, property is being bought. And so, again, we know that it directly deals with some improvement to Birdneck Road, and that improvement deals with going onto 19th Street, putting a turning lane, and we all know, we all know, there's no secret, we all know as to why we want that turn-in lane. And so, because we know why we want it, we need to put it on hold until the decision is made in November.
Mr. Wood.
And I have a question for the city attorney on that, because I've... Two speakers have talked about a decision in November. Is the project on hold because of a legal decision?
There has been no injunction or other order entered by the court that would prevent the city from doing anything. There was a lawsuit filed by Mr. Memes in the Civic League. The city filed a demur. That demur was granted as to seven of eight counts with leave to replead one as it related to the zoning decision that this council made some months ago. Mr. Memes filed a motion to reconsider that ruling, and before the court, the trial judge who heard it could hear it. Again, he was injured in an accident. The city asked to have another judge appointed to hear that motion to reconsider, and the chief judge said, "No, we're going to wait until the presiding judge returns." But there has been no order that says, or there's no injunction pending, or there's no other order of the court that says that the city cannot acquire any property in the area of 19th Street and Birdneck.
Great. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Urn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, really, I guess before we, I make a motion, I just want to confirm with you, Mr. Four, we don't have any specific plans as to what we're going to do at this point. We don't have any site work or anything like that that we would be looking at, or correct?
No, I mean, we own the adjacent 11 and 3/4 acres of property. This acquisition seems to make some good sense just from that standpoint, and we had committed to try and work with the church to provide additional parking as we reconfigure at some point in the future the area around there.
And I want to reinforce that commitment. We want to work, we want to be a good neighbor, and this opportunity really allows us to get a piece of property that joins our property, and I think that will be a benefit to the church in the long run as far as helping with parking.
Well, if I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, as well, that we do have churches within the community that we do shared uses with parking. Obviously, houses of worship have a very symbiotic relationship with a lot of the developments that we do. And to you, Mr., to Reverend Knight, I mean, we certainly have opportunities that we can probably share parking that is not utilized during most of your worship services, and to that extent, I'd love to be able to help you with that in the future. But having said that, we do have an opportunity to pick up a contiguous parcel of property to the public pieces that are already assembled there and are critical to any expansion, regardless of whether an arena happens or not, to what is actually the largest capital project in our city to date, which is our convention center. And to that end, I would move that we approve the acquisition of the property at 324 North Birdneck Road.
Have a motion, have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment. I'm very much concerned about the, of course, you know, if there are folks who think that maybe the city is getting some property that was going to be the church's. Unfortunately, the property owner may well have intended, if things had gone one way, to perhaps have willed this property, but sometimes things happen, and if she is in need of long-term care, we all know what the expense is of that. And if this sale is, and the "by" seems to be, the guardian, the Jewish family service guardian conservator, obviously sees that this is needed for her care. And so, you know, I think what may have been her want, desire at one point just may not have worked out because she now needs to have the property sold for her care, and some of us have all been in those situations. Is that, if I could ask, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am, you hit it on the head.
You have a motion, a second, any other discussion? I'll call for the question.
By motion of Tennessee Row, you have adopted the ordinance and approved the acquisition.
Very good. Is there... We'll move to appointments, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Economic Development Authority, Mr. Dave Behren, to the Bayfront Advisory Commission, Mr. Wally Damon, and to the Human Rights Commission, Tommy Kuban.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of Tennessee Row, you have appointed those named by the vice mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We'll adjourn and stand by for open mic.